...may have. Next, anyone for or against the request will be asked to come forward to the microphone and express their opinion. Each side will have a total of ten minutes to speak. Plats, rezonings, revised master plans, street renaming, and tax amendments require a public hearing. And once the public hearing is completed, Planning Commission members will deliberate and render their decision. Planning Commission members with a personal or financial interest in any petitioner's request are required to recuse themselves. The members of the Planning Commission are Anne Clemens, yours truly. We have a new member, Mr. Garrett Smith to my left. He's taken Mr. Reggie Mantous' place. And then we have Mr. Frank Cook to my right, Mr. Buddy Harwick to my left, Mr. Cruz Reeves to my left immediately, Mr. Reginald Hawkins to my right, Mr. Reggie Dunn to my right, and Mr. James Reed to my right. And we also have Ms. Leslie Stones on the far left. The members in the land use staff tonight are Mr. Tommy Tyson, Mr. James Sinner, and Ms. Jovan Hines. Members and petitioners are requested to please speak directly into the microphone. The minutes are recorded for legal purposes, and this is the only way to accurately pick up the audio. Tonight, we do have nine members, and it takes five votes to pass a motion because of the number of members present. And I don't think that you'll have to do this to delay your request if we had less than nine members, and that would be a concern for you. And now I'd like to ask if there are any changes to the agenda, Mr. Tyson?
The last item has been delayed till February 24th, the next meeting. That's a request to rezone property on Holt Street.
Thank you, sir. Before we continue, I would like to ask if we have a motion to accept the minutes. Is there any correction?
Motion to approve.
Second. Moving properly, second, all those in favor. Motion passes, the minutes have been adopted. Thank you so much. First item, please, sir.
Let me get to it, one second. First item is presented by J.M. Garrett and Sons on behalf of Clifford Winston. It's a request for final approval of Clifford Winston, flat number one, located on the south intersection of Old Muckweetumpka Highway and Fuller Road in a R-60, I mean R-50 district.
Petitioner present? All right. Petitioner not present.
Let's carry it over.
Go to the next item, sir.
Yes. Next item is by Larry Speaks and Associates, Inc., on behalf of Wells Printing Company, Inc., requesting final approval of Wells Printing Company, Inc., flat number one, on the north side of Troy Highway, some 750 feet east of Bell Road, it's a M1 district.
Steven Speaks with Larry Speaks and Associates, representing Wells Printing. Wells owns a piece of undeveloped piece of property, as you see on the maps, on the southeast side of their main plant site, there at the corner of Bell and Troy Highway. They're proposing to plat this 8.48 acres. The intent is to sell to the neighboring church, True Divine Church, next door.
All right, thank you. Any comments, questions from the commission? Questions or comments from the audience? Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moving properly, second, all those in favor. Motion passes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next item is by Barrett Simpson, Inc., on behalf of the City of Montgomery, requesting final approval of Freedom Village, flat number one, on the west side of Edgar D. Nixon Avenue, some 184 feet north of Liberty Street, in an R-60 Elm District.
Good evening. Blake Rice, Barrett Simpson Engineering. Same property I had before this commission, I believe, month before last, for the Freedom Village multifamily. This is a plat cutting that parcel up into the majority parcel that's needed for the project, as well as a small secondary parcel that will be left as a future amenity site for the development to the south. Be happy to answer any questions.
I noticed on the page three C, it shows Elm Street. That street's not going to go through there, is it?
No, sir. It's not.
I'm just surprised it's showing it.
Any other questions from the commission? Does the audience have any questions or concerns for this project? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Moving properly, second, all those in favor. Thank you. Motion passes. Thank you, sir.
You need to ask, you need to ask no poll.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. The motion was moved and second, and I did not ask for opposition. Is there any opposition to this project? No?
No, I mean, you need to ask, you need to ask.
I will do that, sir. Thank you so much.
Whoever opposed.
Did you oppose?
Yes.
All right. Did you get that note that there was eight, four, and one against? By Mr. Dunn. Thank you, Mr. Dunn.
The next item is presented by Elena Costanzo, on her behalf, requesting to rezone a parcel of land, 2.12 acres, on the west side of Watson Circle, approximately 400 feet south of Atlanta Highway, from a B3 to a R100.
Petitioner not present? All right.
The next item is presented by Troy Blevins, his on behalf, requesting to rezone one lot on the north side of West Second Street, approximately 300 feet east of Forest Avenue, from O1 zoning to a B1B district.
Move that in a thousand.
Y'all sure y'all did on the right date?
Let's see what this person has. Do you have an item on the agenda, ma'am? All right.
The next item is presented by Carson Baird, on behalf of Collision Craft, Inc., requesting to rezone one parcel of land, 1.53 acres, on the north side of Thomas from W.L. Dickinson Drive, adjacent to the CSX Railroad from M1Q to B3.
I'm not Carson Baird. I'm Lee Merweather. But I couldn't let y'all go again. No, I'm Lee Merweather here in place of Carson Baird, on behalf of Collision Craft, asking to rezone his property from M1Q back to B3, its original zoning.
Go ahead.
Lee what? Oh.
Go ahead. Ms. Reed.
You go ahead. Is the purpose of this going to be for auto repair right here? Is the purpose of this going to be auto repair, strictly auto repair?
It is auto body repair. It's not mechanic work.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
But it's not going to be for storage?
Mini storage?
No. I mean, having cars there, you know, leaving cars there.
No, no, no.
Six months, eight months?
Oh, no, no, no.
Okay. Let's make sure Mr. Baird understands that.
Oh, Lee, what's in it now?
A company called Innovative Graphic Solutions.
And they're moving.
And they are moving out.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay.
And back when we rezoned it, then, we platted it, I mean, we cued it for that purpose. Now, I don't remember why it was cued, but it was.
Any other questions from the commission, concern? Does anyone in the audience have a concern or question that would like to?
For some reason, I misunderstood you when I first got here. And I guess y'all have moved quite quickly, because I was coming for number three. And I wanted to ask, because I have requested the planning commission information.
Ma'am, we passed that item.
No, no, let me speak, please, because the information. The information that I'm looking at says that your term has expired. At least three or four of y'all, term has expired. All I wanted to know is, if your term has been renewed, where are the minutes in the city council meeting? I was there when they renewed Mr. Dunn, Garrett Smith, because the other guy resigned or something. So he was appointed by my councilman. So if your term has expired, and you haven't been reappointed, does that mean that this is a fully operational planning commission?
You have to take that up with the planning department, ma'am, and the city council. We have not, we're not on that item at all. The item has passed, and right now, we're dealing with.
So how can you operate as a commission if your term has expired?
That's an entirely different conversation. It has nothing to do with items.
So it shouldn't, business shouldn't go on as possibly if it's not.
Has nothing to do with this item, ma'am.
If the individuals are making decisions, and terms have been expired, that should be illegal by Act 618 and by the bylaws that you all are supposed to follow. And then you rush through the agenda.
We're not discussing that, ma'am. That is not the item on this agenda right now.
Okay, well, I'll ask the media.
All right. Is there any concerns from the audience, if you'd like to speak regarding this particular item? Hearing none. Is there a motion for item number six?
Move, move to approve.
Circle.
Moving properly, second, all those in favor? Any opposition? You have it up. Thank you so much. So noted. Next item, please.
Thank you.
Next item is by Steven Zimmerman, Zimmerman Capital LLC, requesting rezone one parcel of land, 18 plus or minus acres, on the southwest corner of East-South Boulevard and Woodley Road, from B4 to B2.
So I'm looking to rezone my shopping center. It's a 200,000 square foot shopping center. I've got a 74,000 square foot old surface merchandise in there, and I'm looking to rezone it from B4 to B2 to include self-storage.
I have a question. The self-storage, is it going to be inside or outside?
Inside.
The whole thing will be inside?
Yes.
So, you know, people can bring RVs or boats or whatever, they'd be able to bring them inside?
No, no, it'll be for home goods.
Home goods only?
Yes.
And inside, okay.
Yes.
Are all of those, are all of your buildings going to be for storage?
No, just that one.
Just, just, just one?
It's a retail center, so I've got, like, Metro PCS, restaurants, a grocery store. But this center space is a tough one to lease, but we've had a lot of interest with self-storage.
Okay, I got you. I got you. Okay. Thank you.
So you won't be tearing anything down? So you won't be tearing anything down? You're just redoing it?
There's nothing to do. There's, no. We won't be doing any construction. Other than paint.
Right. Okay.
Is that the area that, right there, where the Burger King is? Is that Plaza? Is that, we're talking about?
That's it, yes.
Capital Plaza?
That's mine, yes.
So that area that's in the middle there, that's empty?
That big one in the middle?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's empty.
So that's the area that you're going to make a inside storage?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
I see.
Ms. Clemens, a staff question. Sir, is this going to be accessible over here? Is this going to be accessible, like, 24 hours a day?
No.
Okay, so it will be secured, have a passcode or something?
So that would be something that we do into the lease with the tenants, but no one can get into that property without, like, you know, like, when you go to a gym and you have to have a card or something to get in to get their own. But I don't even think they're going to allow that. I'm not sure, to be honest with you. It's just like a regular self-storage, where it's indoors, but it's not going to be, someone won't be, I don't believe someone will be sitting there 24/7.
No, well, the property would be accessible 24/7. Can somebody go in there at 3:00 in the morning and get something out?
No.
Okay. There will be hours of operation?
They are, on all my, everything has hours of operation, and they're not allowed to be open past a certain point in my center.
Thank you.
But you're leasing it to someone who's going to do the storage?
Yes, sir.
Another entity. You're just going to still own the building?
That's correct.
Okay, you're, okay.
My question is more the Department of Planning. I didn't understand your comment. What was the purpose of the comment?
Which is, I'm sorry.
Which comment? Under remarks?
Right, under the remarks, there. Under the Department of Planning, the remarks.
It's the description, what he's seeking.
Is it the oversaturation, Mr. Cook?
Yes, that was my question. What's the, what's the issue there?
And it's observation by the planning director that there's a lot of mini warehouse of self-storage in that area.
Well, why don't you have the same issue with gas stations, or with hotels, or whatever? I don't quite understand the comment.
Mr. Cook, you'll have to address Mr. Smith. He's the director. It's just that we have to send him to them. I see what you're saying.
I don't, I don't quite understand the comment at all.
It has more to do with marketing than anything about the zoning.
Yeah, I mean, I just didn't understand the comment.
Well, I don't, I don't know.
I mean, I don't understand. Would you please address that with Mr. Smith and ask him why he's putting something like this in the comments?
Sure.
I'd appreciate it, because I don't, I just don't understand the comment. I mean, there's no need for it. If these, if these people want to lease it, and it's perfectly zoned, then there shouldn't even be an issue.
He was just making an observation, I think, I don't know.
Well, he doesn't, he didn't make it about the hotels in the city, about the third gas station on the corner. I mean, what, what triggers the comment?
I don't know.
Okay, well, that's my question.
I do not know.
Okay, well, I mean, he doesn't, it's sort of out of the blue.
Well, Mr. Cook, we've had, as you're aware, we've had several new storage facilities in the past year, 18 months, all around town.
Right, and, and if somebody feels that they can work a deal, and they feel like they can do the deal, and it meets the zoning, what's the issue?
I don't know if there's one.
Okay, well, that's my comment. I mean, I don't understand why he makes a comment when there's no need for one, unless he's going to do it on every other item where he thinks that things are.
We're sure asking. We don't get these kind of comments from hamburger places and red carpet.
That's my whole point, is we don't get them on other things.
I don't know why.
Well, that's my point. I mean, I don't quite understand why you want us to get involved with this particular one.
That's something you have to ask him out.
Well, I'll be glad to ask him, but.
I will.
Okay, well, if you can ask him, please do so, and I'd appreciate his response. He can call me.
Yes.
I would like to say that Mr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
That the Neighborhood Association did meet and discuss this issue. Their concern was, which is a little different than what you just said, their concern was that it would not be an additional building storage. But what you're saying is that it's going to be the existing center part of Capital Plaza that's going to be an inside storage operation.
That's correct.
That's only going to be like furniture storage, or whatever the person's going to put in there.
That's correct.
But it's not going to be anything additional to that building. Is that correct?
Yes, there's no place to, I couldn't add to the building if I wanted to.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure.
Yeah, no, it, it's no different than, like Mr. Cook said, that.
And right now, that property's empty, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's no different than, if you walk into a Dollar General, it's, everything's inside. There's nothing being built outside. There's no outside storage. There's no outside access. You wouldn't even know it's a personal storage, other than the sign on the building.
Steven?
Oh, excuse me.
No, go ahead.
Explain to me how they're going to actually bring items into that building. I mean, where do you stop? Where do you, you know, because you had a parking lot. I mean, how are they going, how are they going to get things in and out?
That was an old service merchandise.
Right, I know, I know the building.
We've got two loading docks.
On the back.
On the back, and we have a drive-in dock.
Okay, so they're going to load from the back?
They, everything's loaded in the back, yes.
So, so there's nothing coming out front that's?
To my knowledge, anything other than grabbing a, like, a small item, like a coaster?
Sure, sure, sure.
But when they, but we've got all the, any big storage will be, all the stuff that'll be inside the containers, or whatever they're putting in there, will be installed through the back. Now, when people need couches and beds and stuff, there'll be a service, I'm sure, that picks it up, or they pick it up and bring it out in the back, and then they unload it and put them in the storage. But no, it's not going to be a thoroughfare in the front. It can't.
Yeah. Okay. Do you mind that being part of this process of approval?
I'm sorry?
Do you mind that, what you just said, being a part of this process? In other words, it would be access to it from, for loading and unloading would be from the exterior? From the rear?
From the rear?
Yes, sir.
You mean, meaning if they did unload or unload in the front, I'd be breaking the?
I mean, there's going to be some small.
There's going to be some.
But I'm, I guess what I'm trying to see, I can see that being a real problem?
I don't mind if you add it to it. Anything big enough has to go through the back. You can't stick, you can't get them through the doors like this. Like those double, all we have in the front leading to there are two double doors, like we, I just walked into. So anything they can get through those double doors is going to be minimal. Any big kind of storage will be, it has to, it has physically, has to go through the back.
And getting it to where they put it, they've got machines to move that around?
They'll have forklifts on the inside.
Forklifts and?
I've got a drive-up dock to get forklifts in and out.
Okay.
Not, not a dock you see, not, not a, I forget what they're called, not the ones you see diesels back up to in their level.
Yes, sir.
But it's, it's a ramp. And you could, if you wanted to, you could drive an 18-wheeler inside this space.
Oh, okay. That, you just answered.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's really, I had it built for, hopefully, to get a, I've had a lot of interest for personal storage.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Anything from the audience? Would you like to come and speak? Anyone from the audience? Is there a motion?
I move to approve with the qualifications that Mr. Buddy said.
Joe, is that noted?
Mr. Hardwick.
Thank you. All right, is there a second?
And, and I didn't mean any really restrictions on it, I just, so.
Yeah, with the understanding. With the understanding, large items from the back, small items from the front, basically.
Right. Is there a second?
Circle.
Moving properly, second, all those in favor? The motion passes. Any opposition? None, the motion passes. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I think eight is gone, not on here. Eight has been delayed, is that correct, Mr. Tyson?
Yes, February 24th.
All right, that brings us to the part of the agenda where we need to elect.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Do you mind asking if somebody happened to come in that we didn't, that's on there?
Is anybody on the, in the audience that had an item on the agenda and did not, and was tardy? All right. There are none. And we're at the part of the agenda where we need to elect new officers. I am going to relinquish the gavel. And it's been a blast.
We could tell from tonight.
You're so happy, huh?
Madam Chair, I nominate Mr. Hardwick for president.
Chairman.
For chairman.
President might not be bad either.
That might not be a bad idea, either.
Sorry about that.
All right, Mr. Hardwick has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, we will close that on said name, Mr. Buddy Hardwick. All right, now, is there a motion to accept?
I'm looking forward to telling you the notes to you.
Is there a motion to accept?
I'd make a motion that we accept. Mr. Hardwick as chair.
Is there a second?
Circle.
Moving properly, second, that Mr. Hardwick will become the next chair. Men, we are delighted. All those in favor? Any opposition?
I thought we already voted.
Hearing none, the motion passes. No, you did not vote. You nominated three times, and then we were, the motion. All right?
I voted against him.
Now, we need to nominate a vice chair. Is there a nomination?
I'd like to nominate Mr. James Reed.
All right. Mr. James Reed has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Nomination has closed. Is there a motion to accept Mr. James Reed as our vice chair? Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
All right, moving properly second, all right, moving properly second, that Mr. James Reed will serve as vice chair. All those in favor? Unanimous motion carries. Mr. James Reed is our new vice chair. Thank you so very much. Now we need to elect secretary.
Tommy, do you really want to do that, or is that just kind of a customary thing? What, tell me, tell me what...
Pretty much my job. I'm executive secretary for full boards.
Okay, okay. So, I mean, there is things that...
That's one of my, my job duties.
Okay, all right. Is there signatures and all you have to do for the commission? Is that what that is? I mean, for the, for the planning commission?
Well, to do that is, you know, plats and, you know, signatures stamped is reeased a lot.
Okay, okay.
So what do we have, where are we then?
Well, I'm late. Tommy.
Okay, all right. All right. Mr. Tommy Tyson has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? All right, the nomination is closed on the said name, Mr. Tommy Tyson. All those in favor? Is there a motion, rather?
I make a motion. I make a motion we accept Mr. Tyson as secretary.
All right, is there a second? Moving properly second, Mr. Buddy Hardwood has seconded. All those in favor? Any opposition? Hearing none, motion passes, and the illustrious Mr. Tommy Tyson has been re-elected. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. And Mr. Tyson? Mr. Tyson, may I ask you a question while we're here regarding the person that came to the microphone and discussed exploration dates and all that kind of thing? Who, who does she talk to? Because this is not the...
No, it's not, and we've discussed it in, in the office before, and it's traditionally been serviced until you, until you're replaced, you hold over. And I'll go and make sure that properly that we're doing it that way. It's been that way for a long, long time.
They have to re-nominate us every three years.
Yes, but the practice has been, sometimes their, the council is, has difficulty finding a replacement or whatever. What I'm trying to say is that we, the practice is to hold over until there is a replacement.
Right.
Or re, or re...
Yeah.
Well, it's also a fact that we quite often meet without a full board, and if one person hadn't been re-nominated, that one vote wouldn't make that much difference.
Well, it's interesting that it came up because that was one of my points that I wanted, I, I've asked, and you, quite frequently, about once a year, asked to get a copy of the people on it and also when their appointments are, because they're, it, it really is to our advantage as, as a board to make sure that, you know, let me say it this way, I can't argue with the lady. I can't argue with her.
Let me say one thing.
And I think we can, could I get that sent to me?
Let me say this, your advisory, what your activity is advisory. It's, you know, you make a recommendation for rezoning or on plats by state law, the only thing that's required is a public hearing. And you can't deny a plat for, on no reason. You, you have to act on it if it's something, if it fails to meet some standards that the city requires, inex grounds to deny it, but the other actions that this body takes are advisory to the council.
Isn't a replat where they come to the city and replat, isn't that the same as a rezoning?
No, it's, no, it's the same as a plat. It's just changing the plat.
But if they come and put it, and put it with the city, and that, but we just went through with the problem over at...
Mr. Cook, I'm going to allow, I'm going to adjourn the meeting so that the gentleman...
Okay, that's fine.
Meeting has been adjourned. You guys can continue.